Where we also have staff for you available to answer your questions and take your written comments if you not wish to speak this evening. We also encourage the public to comment via the website or by mail to MTA Government Affairs 2 Broadway, 20th floor, New York, New York, 10004. This hearing is an opportunity for the members of the public to comment on the proposals. Members of the MTA Board of Directors and senior staff are here to listen, so board members will be listening, not commenting. And I should emphasize that every bit of public comment, spoken comments tonight at other hearings, all correspondence, emails, phone calls, and comment cards will be transcribed and incorporated into the official record and provided to all the board members so they can review them prior to the final consideration of the fare and toll proposals. For the record, today's date is November 27th, the time is 5:06 PM, and the hearing site is Mason Hall, Baru College, New York, New York. Now let me briefly describe the procedure for tonight's hearing. I will call the names of people who have registered to speak in the order in which they are registered. For example, some have registered online or by mail beforehand, and we will call them first if they are here. We open the onsite registration today at 4:00 PM, and it will remain open until 8:00 PM. We will remain here until all registered speakers are heard, and if you have pre-registered, please see a member of the staff outside so that we know you're with us tonight. When your name is called, please proceed to the nearest microphone located in each aisle and give the white registration tab to the usher. When you approach the microphone, please provide us your name and any affiliation you wish to announce that we have for the record. And this is important, so that we can be fair to all speakers, we ask that you keep your remarks to our limit of two minutes. The clock below will indicate how much time you have remaining, and a warning light will remind you that you have 30 seconds left to conclude your remarks. Now, if you run out of time, remember you can submit complete written testimony to supplement your oral testimony. This hearing site is accessible to people with mobility impaired, and sign language interpreters are also here tonight. Please silence your cell phone. The restrooms are located through the back doors of the hearing room, and if for any reason you need to leave the building and plan to come back, you will need to re-enter through the security check outside. Thank you all for, thank you for listening to all of that, and now let me introduce the MTA Board of Directors and senior executive staff that are here with us tonight. Board members, Acting MTA Chairman Fernando Ferrer, Andrew Albert, Norman Brown, David Jones, Susan Metzger, Charles Merzler, Mitch Pally, Peter Ward, Carl Weisbrod, MTA and Senior Executive Leadership, MTA Managing Director Ronnie Haycom, MTA President Patrick Foy, MTA Chief Financial Officer Bob Ferran, MTA New York City Transit President Andy Byford, MTA Bus Company President Darryl Irvin, MTA Bridges and Tunnels President Cedric Holt. We will now call our first public speaker of the evening, George Bedman.
My name is George Bedman, and I am a Riders Alliance member from Brooklyn. I work in Unit 12 for major retail, making minimum wage. If I'm lucky, I get 20 hours per week. I'm here to testify against the unfair fares. It will be a great financial burden to me. I think it is only necessary that you improve service before asking for such a high. Also Albany needs to provide a solid source of funding for public transit. You can't keep asking the public for more money because you're not going to get it. Remember, the public, you are asking money from the non-majority, it's regular dollars you do. We have to look dollars to dollars and pay current bills. As for, as you ask for more money, people will get disgusted and end up finding other methods of transportation. The end result will be that you will end up with less revenue due to decreased rideship rather than more. I should not have to spell this out, as I would hope the members of the board would have enough brains to figure this out. Fix the trains and buses first, and then ask for more money. Fixing the switches and signal systems. Let's get to work more effec, more effectively. I believe you have the manpower to get this done. Show the writing public that the system is getting better, then you will have a leg to stand on when asking for more money. And next year is not going to be a good year to ask for money because, don't forget, the L train is going to be shutting down, and service is definitely not going to get better. You are going to have to lose money in the short term to make money in the long term. And finally, please, don't rubber stamp this fare hike as you have done in the past. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, Mr. X, followed by Gilder Feliciano. I just want to recognize that we've been joined by MTA Chief Development Officer Jana Lieber.
I could be at home watching SmatDaw, but instead I'm babysitting you. And as I said before, the MTA doesn't stand for Metropolitan Transportation Authority. It stands for Money Thrown Away, okay? We have the MTA Executive Director who looks and behaves like wannabe Steve "Welcome Back" Carter. If you combine him with Paulie Trumper, you get the fatless rule of Maye Young. They're both two Ps in a pot. They're both stuck on stupid, okay? This idiot who advertises public hearings in an untidy manner. Between November 1 and 15, I logged to your website at least once, I checked for public hearings once, and I saw nothing. November 16, I see the information on your website, but I don't see it on the homepage. November 18, I see it on your homepage. Are you serious? Are you stuck on stupid? Are you confused? Are you stuck on stupid? Or are you just mentally retarded? How long? If you want us to testify your public hearings, you need to advertise it in a timely manner. How long? You can't advertise it at the 11th hour, okay? You can't half-step like Big Daddy Kane and then say you're down with OPP like Law &amp; By Nature. And also, you can't say you're hardcore like ECW. Either get it together or throw the towel at the Golden Book of All Scholar, which we did for Bob Backlund many years ago. Just throw the towel. If you can't get it right, if you can't advertise in an untidy manner, don't ad, you shouldn't hold them. There's no excuse for that. And all I have to know, the current MTA Executive Director, already missed two public hearings, and also five times with Andy Byford. I'm surprised she's here tonight. But I guess she's here because this has gone to Fan Toes Creases, and she wants to get her face moved to the camera? Maybe that's why she's here. I'm surprised she's here. Because in the past, when she missed the other two public hearings, I asked, did she know she was, because she knows it's testifying, and she didn't want to make it like Peter Calhoun getting a devil's cycle, who had to be one of my first challengers.
Sir, if you could please wrap up your remarks.
Okay, so to the MTA Executive Director, you need to advertise his public hearings in a timely manner, and you need to show, not no-show, unless you're pregnant.
Next public speaker is Gilbert Feliciano, followed by Alexis Stewart. Ms. Stewart?
Hello, my name's Alexis Stewart, now from Educational Video Center. And right now, we're working on a documentary about, does the MTA try to disenfranchise low-income communities and communities of color? So, we have a couple of questions. Will the fare increase fund ramps and elevators? Well, you can't answer the questions. Okay. Will the fil, eh, is the MTA spending more money on Wi-Fi and LCD screens instead of necessary repairs for the MTA? That is it.
Thank you. David Vassar, followed by Anthony Cavallari.
Hi, everybody. My name's David Vassar. I live in Morningside Heights, and really enjoyed my ride down here, coming across 26th Street in particular is very rewarding, thanks to community boards four, five, and six for approving that. It makes it possible to get here safely, so thank you for that and all the protected bike lanes out there. It's keeping me young, cycling is, but the streets are so congested these days, it's really worse than ever. It's a danger to cyclists and pedestrians and to other motorists, and that's not to speak of the pollution that's caused by all the motoring, a lot of which is basically idling at times because it's so packed, it's so congested that folks can't move. I'm thinking of the Nor'easter recently, remember the Nor'easter, anyone? In my neck of the woods, Upper Amsterdam Avenue, I looked down from my 15th floor apartment at about 11:00 PM, and it was still backed up. Folks still were not moving or inching along. There were, during the time I was looking out my window, just feeling bad for everyone I was looking at, I think about four ambulances during that time were trying to get through, just inching along, sirens blaring, and just not getting anywhere. So there's so many reasons for congestion pricing. Encourage people to get out of their cars by improving transit. We've got to expand and refine and fix our transit system, and the proceeds from congestion pricing can help that along. It's, I think, close to a billion a year can be had from this, so let's do it. And let's keep building the protected bike lanes too. It's the only way to cycle around town safely. I think cycling and the good transit complement each other as far as the health and the environmental integrity of our city is concerned, so let's go for it. Thank you.
Thank you. Anthony Cavallari, followed by Deborah Baldwin, followed by Alan Ginsberg.
Okay, my name is Anthony Cavallari of Queens. I'm 67 years old. I've been driving the subway and buses all my life, all 67 years. I have seen the deterioration of the system ever since the first illegal strike on the Lindsay, and continuing to today. No doubt, this system needs money, but before you ask for one more penny, prove to us how the money is being spent that you're getting. We, the people, are demanding an independent forensic fiscal audit, not done by the state, not done by the board, by the independent accounting firm, to prove to us that you really need the money, that you really have the money already, and you're not just figuring it right. Now, and when the fiscal audit is completed, the forensic audit, then it's up to Albany to implement the reforms and recommendations. I see the, you know, you know, the 1-hour railroad, already documented the corruption in the 1-hour railroad tunnels going into Grand Central Station. I've seen the corruption every day. Five guys to change one light bulb on the number seven platform of, at Grand Central. How many times I passed by a platform that was stationed being rehabilitated, got 18 guys at the platform, 15 of them are playing on their telephones. Enough is enough. That looks like a duck, quack like a duck, sounds like a duck is a duck. It's corruption, pure and simple corruption, and we're paying for it. So, all I'm saying, prove to us. That's it.
Thank you. Deborah Baldwin, followed by Alan Ginsberg.
Good afternoon, I'm Deborah Baldwin. I'm here on behalf of Riders Alliance, and I'm here on behalf of myself. I live in Murray Hill. I'm like countless New Yorkers dependent on the transit system, particularly the buses. I don't need to tell you stories about what it's like to stand on a corner waiting for a bus, to get to a doctor's appointment on time, to get to where you need to go. You guys take the bus, right? I'm sure you do. So you know what it's like. You're standing there, the sun is setting, the temperature's dropping, you're waiting to see if A bus is going to come, or maybe a gaggle of buses will come. I understand the need for money. I understand the system needs resources, but when I look around the bus and see who's depending on the bus to get where they need to go, I wonder, why are we balancing the books on the backs of these working New Yorkers? Can we find another way to do this? And can we improve service before we time a fare increase request? Albany should look into this. Albany should pay for it. Albany should help us out. Until then, improve service and put off the fare hike. Thank you.
Thank you. Alan Ginsberg, followed by Juan Castillo, followed by Sally Strowman.
Good evening. My name is Alan Ginsberg. I am from the Riders Alliance, and I also live in Manhattan, but I'm not one of those Manhattans with a six-figure income. I'm here today to speak out against the fare increase, although frankly, I think that it's rubber stamped and it'll just go along with it automatically. However, I'll just say this, for once, take at the bur, stop putting the burden on the average rider, who of many of them are working-class New Yorkers desperate to survive. Instead, have the guts and the courage to speak out against Governor Como and the state legislature, and tell them to fully fund our system that is in a state of collapse and frankly going to hell. Thank you.
Juan Castillo, followed by Sally Strowman, followed by Emery Hajdu.
As you, as you can see, I didn't have, I didn't get a chance to refer to speech of my own, so, anyway, my, as you can see, I'm a disabled customer, and my mother and older brother are also disabled customers, and we pay, and we always pay our fare $135, and... Anyway, we, we, we don't want to pay a lot more than what the fare has currently, we basically had enough of the fare hikes. And we should be, instead of spending money on raising fares and tolls on metro cars, bridges, and tolls on bridges and buses, we should, we should make the, we should spend mon, spend money on whatever is necessary, like build ramp, like building ramps on, on subway stations that have elevators that tend to break down eas, very easily. Thank you. Also, we should spend mon, spend money on improving subway and bus service, like adding new SP, select bus service lines to some, around the five boroughs. Also, we should take the opportunity to invest on ma, making improved stat, improvements to stagnate the limited stop, the limited stop buses, which I'll, I'll have to bring, bring that up another, another time. Also, that's all I have to say about that. Thank you.
Sally Strowman, followed by Emery Hajdu.
Good eve, good evening. My name is Sally Strowman. I live on the Lower East Side. I am opposed against the fare increase, not that we don't need it, but there's no improvement in our service. I live on an F-line train station that stops on East Broadway. When the train comes in from Manhattan going to Brooklyn and vice versa, plus I have the M22 bus that stops on Madison and Rocket Street. When all three comes into, at that particular stop, the bus stop and the two train station, there's no way that you can go up and down the stairwells on the Madison Street side. At the other end of the subway turn, there are three entrances at East Broadway, which there is an escalator. There's no escalator on the Madison Street side, and I feel that there is a safety issue, be that mothers, elderly people have to walk down the stairs on the Madison Street side. Buses are crowded. There are not enough M22 buses. At certain points of the day, the M22 have multi-wheelchairs, they have elderly people getting on. The same thing with the Avenue A bus, there's four D's to one A, and we need service on the Lower East Side. Mr. Byford, I know in England, you had several subway stations done about three or four years ago, and you did it on time, and you also drained, I think it was a river or a lake, to make sure a train went through that tunnel. You should look into that to help MTA. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Emery Hajdu, followed by Joseph Peters, followed by Trudy Mason.
Hi, thank you. First of all, we can all agree that the MTA needs funding. The Fast Forward Plan is going to reshape the transportation in the city and make our lives so much easier, commuting to work, to school, and to home. I attended Andy Byford's Fast Forward open house, and I was amazed at what he and the rest of the MTA have been able to accomplish while making this plan. And while a fare hike would definitely help with funding a fast forward, it's possible that we don't need this, and this plan could possibly become reality simply by state and possibly federal funding. But if this cannot be achieved, I would support a fare hike, because I would support anything that would get Fast Forward through. But on the other hand, I would also say that in, when it comes to people who really, who are pinching pennies and just don't hardly have enough money to get by, are struggling to pay the bills, are struggling to pay rent, they, they're already having trouble paying for everything, and it would be yet another burden on their backs to pay more for the subway, and I just don't think that this should be put on the people's hands. Thank you.
Thank you. Joseph Peters, followed by Trudy Mason, followed by H.B. Schrader.
You know, I'm speaking as, I just speak with the fare hike, because it don't make no kind of sense right now, because right now, the service doesn't require, well, I require improvement on the service. No, we need like, A bar can't have paid a high fare. I see people on the street, don't got no money, like, like, so, I'm not working the way, you know, increase the fare, you can't, we cannot make it. So I feel like right now, like, I heard that they do, like, they, they, that, that they trying to get plans, to get money for, to improve the service. Now they like, Mayor Com, the mayor, and the governor is talking about some plans. The best thing for them to do is, they have to get together to get some plans going, because they, 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 L train gonna be shut down next year, and the service gonna be really messed up, and all, and that's gonna be jacked up, knowing that. Right now, they, 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 it's like, they are repairing the stations right now, you know, on the subway line, that the subway train don't go all the way because, because they're, they're gonna modify the signals. That's on the fast forward. That's a good job, the whole thing. Like, I agree with the fast forward program for 10 years, but the whole thing is, like, the whole thing like, is the money is going to come anyway from the government. It, it'll make sense to push us, uh, go to pay for that, because that's our job. The best thing they, they, they do, like, you gotta try to get a plan, to get money for the, for this, um, fast forward. I, I agree with the fast forward program, you know, the, the, the system need to be re-modified, but the whole thing is right now, like, with the money going to come from, for the government, that's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Trudy Mason, followed by H.B. Schrader, followed by Councilman Yudanas Rodriguez.
Hi, my name is Trudy Mason. I'm appointed to the Trans, New York City Transit Riders Council by the Manhattan Borough President Gail Brewer. I've got a whole, in my prepared statement, I've got a whole history, but I think all of you know about the PCAC and the TRC, and if not, you should. I am speaking on behalf of the Transit Riders Council. We recognize that this fare increase is necessary to keep our system functioning, and the TRC supports, as it has in the past, as long as there are no cuts to service. It is essential that the increased option selected offers the fairest deal for transit's best and most frequent customers, the New Yorkers who ride the subway system, and the buses every day. The last few years have been very difficult for transit riders, including me, and I'm going to depart for my prepared statement. On my way over here, I was delayed for close to 17 minutes. I took a count, and I have the car number I was in, on the number six train, where everybody was unceremoniously dumped on the platform at 68th Street after the, they figured out that there was a stuck door, and it wasn't going to move, and it was back and forth, and then pushed onto another train. So believe me, I not only sympathize, but empathize with everybody sitting here. Anyway, we have all started to see some incremental improvements that began under the subway action plan, but we have a long way to go to get consistently reliable service, like I didn't experience today. The Fast Forward Plan, which goes even further, presents an opportunity to make significant improvements to the transit system. Its goals include improved performance, station environment, and accessibility. It focuses on the customer experience, including many more countdown clocks, trip planners, and mapping. This all requires $40 to $50 billion that the MTA just doesn't have. At the same time, it has become clear...
If you could please summarize your remarks.
Oh, well, I just, can I have, because I did my aside, can you give me 30 seconds more, please?
You can always submit your testimony.
Okay, anyway, let me just end by saying, what, that finding long-term sustainable funding sources is wise, achieving, as in the Byford's Well-Thwarted Out Plan, and we believe that congestion pricing has to be an integral part of the sustainable funding package. My final words are...
Thank you. Thank, thank you. Ma'am, we, we have a number... Ma'am, ma'am, if you could... Thank you. H.B. Schrader, followed by Councilman Yudanas Rodriguez, followed by Shamique Robinson.
Good evening. My name is H.B. Schrader, and I'm a 92-year-old veteran from World War II. As many of you on the panel know, I'm not going away. When I travel on the subways, I get a discount, because I'm a senior, not because I'm a veteran. I don't know if the public is aware of it, but veterans pay every day, those younger than 65, full fare. We don't think that's fair, and we need help. The mayor of New York City Council decided it was unfair, and they are now funding effectively January the 1st to give veterans attending college in New York City the same discount as seniors. We think it's up to the board at this time to step up to the plate. The maze is the first step, but 95% of veterans will not be eligible. But therefore, you can help, because the governor, the big elephant that's not in this room, there are two bills in Albany that will provide a discount for all veterans. We ask your support to get the governor to support these bills. And I, and the irony of it, it would cost two cents if dedicated from every fare, it would fund a veteran's discount. I ask the public here, if you think that a veteran's service is worth two cents... I ask the public here, if you think that a veteran's service is worth two cents, please raise your hand. When are you going to raise yours?
Thank you. Councilman Yedanez Rodriguez, followed by Shamique Robinson.
Thank you, everyone, especially the member of the public, you're the one who deserves, you know, a big round of applause for being here, making a voice, and standing for the voiceless. I'm here, standing for the immigrants, the 900,000 New Yorkers with disability, the middle class and the working class, who are saying loud and clear, we should not deserve another fare increase. All right, so thanks to members of the board of the MTA for your services. I feel that it is important to recognize what you're trying to do at a moment where this crisis did not happen overnight. I feel that in a city where we have more than 40% of New Yorkers living on poverty, where this city is mainly composed by working class and middle class, our focus should be on real solution, where the MTA should take the leadership, the city and the state should be your partner, to identify a different way of how to raise the revenue, and you guys to control the costs and focusing only maintenance and repair and making our station accessible. I feel that today, there's great ideas on the table, congestion price, increasing the contribution to the wealthy New Yorkers. I hope that we can build a support. Hoy estoy aquí a nombre de los inmigrantes, los 900 New Yorkinos que están en desempleo, la clase trabajadora y la clase media, que dice no al momento en el aumento de la tarifa, que dice busquemos otra solución, concentrémonos en mantenimiento y reparación, y busquemos forma que la ciudad y el estado trabajen junto para que podamos llevar la MTA al nuevo milenio. All right, so thank you also to the MTA for agreeing to come to the hearing next week at the council, as we will be discussing the fast, the moving, the fast-moving plan. So, thank you, everyone, hoping that you will be there at our hearing that we will have next week, as we're going to be discussing on details, the plan that we support, but the plan that deserves real investment, and for the MTA to control the cost and be more transparent on how we invest money from point A to point C on maintenance and repair. Thank you.
Thank you. Shamique Robertson, followed by Mary Kessinger.
Good evening. My name is Shamique Robinson, and I'm here with the Riders Alliance, but I live in Harlem, and I'm a working-class citizen of New York City. And I'm here tonight to testify against the proposed fare hikes. Riders across the city, taxpayers and citizens across the city, we need strong leadership from the MTA board, and more importantly, we need strong leadership from our taxpayer-funded elected officials in Albany to identify dedicated funding for the MTA buses and subways, and not to levy the additional cost on the backs of everyday working-class New Yorkers. I don't have a car. I rely on the subway. I rely on the bus to get back and forth, to make daily appointments in my line of work for a nonprofit. It is literally similar to gambling. It is like rolling dice. You do not...